I'd like to call this council meeting of December 16, 2020 to order. Please stand for the invitation and pledge.
Dear my father, we thank you for this opportunity to join before you this evening. We continue to pray for the leadership of this country, the leadership of this town. We pray that you would impart wisdom on their leadership even amidst the controversies that are currently present. We pray that you continue to protect those that either have been infected by the virus or those that have not. Continue to protect those around us because the community has provided for them during the holiday season. And we pray for those less fortunate than we are. Guide us and lead us and bless us. Amen. 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 The pledge of allegiance is certified in the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. Well, council?
Councilmember Noble?
Here.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Here.
Mayor Dudley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Here.
Councilmember Hoff?
Present.
Manager Campbell?
Here.
Attorney Moore?
Present.
First on our agenda, we have the consent agenda for December. Is there any item that needs to be removed? Dean, if there's none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for December?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda for December.
In a second. Director, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have open forum.
So?
Tonight we have Mr. Dan Grant of 6071 Pitts, Getattan.
I didn't realize it was going to be up here so quickly. I have a few things to address the comments that I made, please. It would please them to just listen to a few things and have a question. I've been living in my house since 1988. I've had boats parked on my grass since 1988. And I've never had a complaint through any neighbor whatsoever. I know that the decision already was made for parking boats in Indian tents and cameras and everything else. I know that's already decided. But I would like the council to maybe consider if we have to do this. It bothers me that I've got to spend money to build something that I don't want to build to begin with. It's given me a long time, you know. That kind of bothers me. So I would like if I got to, and I know it got to by the rules, at least that there would weigh any fees other than the construction cost itself. That it might cost some survey or permit or whatever, weight of fees, at least. Not making the pay tax for permission to build something that I don't want to build to begin with. I imagine some people are going to do a little bit of the financial hardship because there are a lot of retirees in cities who all told us. All right, questions that we do have to do. There's a situation in my neighborhood where parking, to be able to park on one side of the street, we happen to have this side of the street that people are parking on. And we've got circular drive, people cross the street up the circular drive, the neighborhood circular drive. Hey, man, I don't see him here. He said he's coming tonight, so I'm not talking behind his back. He parks in front of our house. Between one roof of my circular drive and the other, there's barely room for a car, but he could do it. And but there's also a mailbox in that portion. There's a mailbox, and that's where he parks his car. So I'd like the council, because I've read all the rules, 12 pages of rules, how they define what a blocking driveway is. First of all, what is blocking the driveway? And second of all, what is blocking the mailbox? Because I think we've got a problem, not only for the guy across my street, but probably throughout the city, seeing that if you have to park my side of the street, you can't. You just didn't have room to do it. And I spoke about this to the guy the other day, and he said, look, I can't park here, I can't park there, I can't park there. I said, I agree. You've got a problem. So I don't want to know so I can not call the cops on them and say, look, hey, you're blocking my driveway, you're blocking my mailbox. But I've still got a little bit of time. I'm wondering if from the center of the road, looking perfectly near to where it can all help get... My dog?
Are you close to being finished?
Pardon me?
Are you very close to being finished?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to know the definition for what blocking mailbox is and what blocking driveway is. It just says those terms in the rules, but it doesn't say how to define that. That's all.
Is that something you want to know or you want to get hold of?
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I'm getting my car, and we can get together outside of the context of this meeting. I think we can have a resolution together.
Yes. Yes. And I'd just ask Manager Campbell if you could somehow give the rest of us a summary quick of the answers to solving that problem. Not right now, later?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I will send this in an email.
Thank you.
I've met Mr. Grant, he purchased on his property, and we can resolve it.
Right. Well, I know we've had discussions of this prior to these two council members being on here, so I was going to make sure that they know that. Okay.
That's all we have on our list tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And I will close open forum. And moving on to old business, the first item is the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-655. Madam Attorney Moore, would you read it by title only, please?
Captain, Madam Mayor, ordinance number 2020-655. An ordinance of the town of Kennesaw City, Florida, amending chapter 34, fire protection and prevention. Article 3, fire prevention code, section 34-129, alarm systems, false alarms. Amending the definition section, amending the fee for false alarms, providing for appeals, providing for severability, providing for legislative findings, providing for the correction of scrutiny errors, and providing for an effective date. This has been a second and final reading of ordinance number 2020-655 by title only, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve ordinance 2020-655?
Motion.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from council? I will open it for public comment. I will close public comment. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoff?
Yes.
Okay, next we have an update regarding the police chief search. Manager Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the town council. If you would please reference the memorandum for me. If this, the notes that I provided, so this can follow along, which just this briefing are found at the top of the manager update. But I'm going to go through every single one of these so that you don't have to read it, you know, accordingly. Just following, and we provided the update, a brief update regarding this process at the November council meeting. But so basically, I'm not, I'm indicating what we did prior to, so I'm just giving you a brief synopsis. So on October 23, we actually had our initial recruitment closure. We had actually soaked the recruitment packet for three weeks out on the internet. We actually advertised with all of those entities listed, which was the Florida Association of Chiefs of Police, International Association Chiefs of Police, the NOLI, which is the National Association of Women in Law Enforcement Executive, NOBLE, which is the National Association of Black Law Enforcement, and HFLC, which is for legal studies. We ended up with 22 total applicants. In the time between October 23 and November 24, we actually did a number of things. We put together a list of master questions that the chief would like to ask. I also put together a list of roughly 40 questions. We realized we only had roughly an hour and a half to two hours of each interview, so we boiled those initial questions down to 25, because we knew we were going to take up roughly two to three minutes per question. And then we then proceeded with boiling, reviewing all of the 22 applications, boiling them down to six applicants that we felt like we could work with. As you can imagine, with any recruitment process, you're going to end up with folks that you, you know, really don't exactly meet the minimum requirements, et cetera. Of those six, we had one entity reach out to us after I emailed them in November to let them know that they would either proceed forward to phase two of the process, or they would not proceed forward to phase two. Out of the six that we boiled it down to, one of them actually respectfully requested to be removed from the process because they've taken a position in another state. So we did that. We scheduled those five for interviews in early December. I wanted to let you know that those interviews have been occurring this week, every day. And the individuals, there are five of them, are James Ritz from Willow Springs, Illinois. It's a small town suburb just outside of Chicago, Joseph Weisman, who's been with the Dayton Ohio Police Department for most of his career, Duane Oakes, who actually retired as a police chief from Almosa, Colorado, which is a town about the size of Kennesaw City, roughly 5,000 people. And he spent his last two years as chief of the Sarasota School Police Department, Elias Vasquez, who actually recently retired from the City of Tampa Police Department, and Terry Nuno, who is currently employed with the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority. Ms. Nuno actually submitted her application in conjunction with our recruitment. We're actually interviewing these folks this week. I wanted you to know that the initial flushing out of the candidates occurred following chief, myself, and I called on the services of Lisa Hendrickson, who is a leadership panelist colleague of mine, but she's also human resources director for the city of Pinellas Park. So I have her at just side eyes on the applicants. And we ultimately ended up coming up with similar recommendations for candidates, and that goes up to chiefs as well. As a result, our overall goal, once we get through the interviews this week, I can honestly tell you the best re-interview so far is the candidate herself. They have some tremendous qualifications. They appear as though they'd be a good fit. But we do have two more. One for tomorrow, and one Friday. I anticipate by Friday afternoon, we'll have a good idea of who we want to bring to phase three of the process. Right now, we have originally scheduled it so that it could pass time for a second interview. And now, I don't know if there's a need for that, because we were able to ask some additional questions in the overall interview process, or ask the applicants to expand upon those that they asked. And they all responded quite well. I can tell you the candidate pool has a few chiefs in it, and then it has a few more senior administrative staff that are not exactly chiefs. But they, in my book, skills and experience are important, but also the personality of the person is a very good indicator of whether or not they can do the position. So right now, I'm holding out until Friday afternoon to make recommendations. Our overall goal is to have two to three candidates come down or come over, whether or not they're local or not. And right now, the clerk has reserved January 4th and 5th, which is a Monday and Tuesday. We're looking to see, after our interviews are completed on Friday, we'll have a better handle of looking for January 4th or 5th to schedule a council meeting that would be the sole purpose of the council meeting, to do a new review of these applicants. In a more social setting, it could be held here. That meeting would be advertised. It would be open to the public. The public could come in, talk with these candidates. I'm trying to promote transparency in this overall process, because ultimately, for the charter, it's the town manager's decision for the chief of police. But in this process, I really invite your feedback, and I think this would be really good. And it also would help the town, you know, for future searches like this. This just kind of conditions us accordingly. So that's what I currently have on the recruitment process. Chief Riley is departing on the 19th of January. And honestly, all of these applicants, based upon the structure that we have set up within the police department, I am confident, so far from what I've seen, they, just about any of them could very easily do the job. But we have to keep in mind that there's going to be a learning process with any new position of at least six months to a year. That's just indicative of the position. But they all exhibit a willingness to learn. The policies and procedures that we have in place from the recent accreditation helps. A number of these folks have experience with accreditation, either directly or indirectly. So I think that's a positive. But I'm available for any further questions as be necessary. I can tell you that I'm excited in whichever chief is selected. I'm looking forward to them bringing a fresh perspective, their personal perspective into the organization. And I also want them to come in with an unbiased perspective, so that they can impart their own experience into the position. In this particular case, I've always heard, as a manager, it's tough, because you don't want to necessarily follow a good manager in accepting a position, or you don't necessarily want to follow a manager that's been on the coast for 30-plus years. In this particular case, we've had a very solid experience with Chief Riley. And he has done a wealth of positives for the department, helping us achieve accreditation. And honestly, I think it's good. And we're now not only a proving ground for officers, we're desired throughout the community. So I think that shows a lot. So I'm available if you have questions.
Want to ask some questions now, just a quick one?
Vice Mayor, yes, sir.
Do all the candidates know the starting wage that we are paying?
Yes, sir. That was posted, and none of them have asked about wage at this point. So we've provided a range.
What do you mean by fresh perspective?
I think any leader that comes to this town needs to be allowed to impart their own personal twist on the position itself, and not automatically just assume that the way things have been done for the last, you know, five, six, seven years, or 50 years, is the way that it needs to be done moving forward. Every leader, every manager has their own philosophy when it comes to doing things. One of our questions was of the applicants, what do you feel needs to be changed within the department moving forward? And amazingly, none of them said we needed to change anything. So...
Well, how would they know? They wouldn't have been here. So what do you mean by fresh perspective? So we have more or less a culture in our police department and in our town that we're trying to achieve. So in our culture of policing, it's more neighborhood policing. They do a lot more than just policing. So what do you really mean by fresh perspective?
Well, I want to...
The management style is, you know, kind of irrelevant, because we're talking about policing culture. We're talking about the culture that our town has set. So when you say fresh perspective to me, that implies that you want to change the culture.
I don't want to do that at all. I just want to continue to attract positive talent. And I don't want to exactly tell them, this is exactly how it's been done, so that they potentially get bored within our particular organization. I want them to look at it as a challenge to maintain the accreditation, but also impart their own creativity in the process, and maybe look at doing some things that we haven't even considered yet. So I don't want to stymie them by tying their hands when they come into the position.
I look at that as if, for example, when they, when we could, before COVID, when we did the monthly coffee with the cop or... Okay, this is, a fresh perspective means they don't have to come in here and be a puppet and do everything exactly the same way we did it. They may have their own creative ideas on how to involve the community. That's how I interpret a fresh perspective. I mean, I agree with you. We don't want to change the culture, but allowing them to have, you know, have their own ideas.
I'm just clarifying, so it doesn't get mixed up in that thing. So originally, we had, I don't think Chief Riley's leaving on a Tuesday. That would be the 19th of January. It was my understanding that it was the 15th. That was our original drop dead date. You know, so we had a drop dead date at the 15th to start with, and that was a four-month notice. And so now we're down to a month left. Where, what is the timeframe? So if you say the third or the fourth, where you're going to have the second interview, what is the timeframe then to be able to turn this around? Because that was my original concern, that we wouldn't have enough time if we didn't get on this and keep it moving. That's why I asked for a timeline to begin with. If we didn't keep it moving, then we would run out of time, and there wouldn't be a turnover period. Because, you know, again, there's nobody that knows that job like the current person that does it.
I agree, but I haven't...
He worked for us, but...
He did. And I have to disagree with you, councilmember, on that, because Chief Riley does have the knowledge and experience. But from my perspective, in executive leadership, because of the situation that we have in place within the department, I think it'd be very good. Right now, all of the candidates have had an opportunity to talk with Chief Riley on the phone in the recruitment process. The way I viewed this was the candidate, obviously, after we do the meet and greet, would provide their sufficient notice within their organization. If not, they're already retired. They would, you know, proceed to come down here if they're not already down here, and they would give us a start date. I would imagine Chief Riley would be more than willing to provide his phone number to these particular applicants and be available if they had any questions. But I don't anticipate that these managers are going to need, or these chiefs, they're not going to need some additional handholding. They're going to have some overall goals and desires of their own moving forward.
So it really doesn't matter if you've ever changed jobs. You know you have a lot of transferable skills. You go into the job, you know how to do your job or whatever. But your first day, you've got to ask, where's the restroom? Where is, where do I file things? Where do I get this? How do I get logged on? All, there's a lot of things that people don't know about when they first go to a job. I mean, that's why you have people that mentor people there. That's why you schedule a time to transfer the knowledge.
Those are good points, Councilmember Noble. But I don't think we got accredited as a police agency without having policies and procedures in place within our police department, to begin them guidance on where to start on their first day.
So then our culture would be one, two, three, go read the policies and procedures?
No, we have a senior lieutenant in place that agrees to initially serve as the interim chief. And he has some senior leadership experience similar to that of the chief. I think he could very easily work to corral and educate the new chief, along with the senior staff sergeants that are currently in place within the organization. So I think it very easily could be a team approach.
Because, as you said, there's chiefs on there, and there's people that are higher up in organizations. And once you get higher up in an organization, the professional thing to do is actually give a month for each, or a week for each year you've been there. Or you might have a contract where it says you have to give X amount of time of notice. So we could be without a chief then for quite a while.
I thought the whole purpose of us trying to move along this process was that we wanted the chief to have a part of the process, that we didn't want him to leave and have this long period of time go by without having his input in the process. So I feel like he has been a part of the process and will be to the bitter end of it. Just so you know that there are times in this town that Manager Campbell is not physically on the one square mile here, and the chief has not been physically on the one square mile of this town. And there have been situations where I've needed to turn to someone who is in charge, and Vino has been the one, and I have called him, and he responds immediately to me and has taken care of it. He's very capable. I think that he would have no trouble with the transition of when this, when Chief Riley is gone and a new one comes on board. I don't see that being a problem.
I don't either. My Vino has been with the department for how many years now?
Almost 20.
Almost 20 years. He pretty well knows what goes on around here. He knows the culture, as you're calling it. He knows the rules. He's going to be the right-hand man to our new chief of teaching him where the bathroom is, where the restrooms are, you know, the whole bit. You know, he's been here a long time. He knows, he knows the program. He's very capable of passing that program on to somebody else, in my opinion.
I'd be concerned if we didn't have the process to the point that it is now. I mean, I agreed with you from the beginning that we needed to get it rolling while the chief was here. But the chief has played his part.
Okay, well, there's usually, you know, I mean, look at any company. If you have a CEO, the CEO transitions to the next CEO. You know, they work together. But if we choose not to do that, that's going to be the choice. Just note that I think we should have a transition, period. I mean, you know, that's most normal places do.
They might. I guess I'm thinking of, and I always hate doing this, but I think of education. I don't see that happening in education. Principals come on board, the other ones long gone. They're in their school, and the principals too.
Escort them, escort them.
I know. I mean, and I'm not saying one's right or wrong. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I can't say it's 100% it's going to be that in every organization.
And I agree with Mayor Dudley. Coming from retail and management, in an ideal situation, sure, the transition, again, is ideal. That would be phenomenal. But most situations, it doesn't work like that. Almost any job I've started is because someone would either fire, let go, or they decide ahead, buy and act. And then here I come to figure it out.
And people are taught to.
But in my opinion, sometimes being there to figure it out on your own is the best way, because then you don't get the stigma or any bad things. You get to learn for yourself to make the decisions, what would be best for the community moving forward. I actually think someone coming in with a fresh slate, a fresh perspective, as, you know, Manager Campbell put it, I don't necessarily see that as a hindrance. I think that's a good opportunity for this.
If they're not capable of handling that situation, I don't think we should hire them, you know? If they can't handle that, who needs them? Someone else. So that's your hiring. You know, you have to show them what you want and how you're going to manage them.
True, but it's a collaborative approach.
Well, yeah. So ultimately, someone has to be in charge, and that's you.
And that's why I originally talked to Tantina, and said, hey, are you willing to do this? And he obliged and said that he was willing to do that. So I think it just, it'll, I respect Councilmember Noble and your concerns. I think it will work out well.
Any other questions regarding council? Okay. Okay. Moving on to new business. The first item is renewal of the 2020, 2021 election contract with the Pinellas County. And that's just regular housekeeping for us.
Yeah. Madam Clerk?
Yes. It's the contract that we enter into every year and provide to them with the, they provide us with an invoice for the cost of the election, and we provide them the signed contract with the invoice.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the renewal of the election contract with Pinellas County.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments from council? I will open it for public comment. I will close public comment. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoff?
Yes.
Next item is a discussion of the 2021 council meeting dates and times. And we have that in our backup packet. And this one is, we just need a consensus. So are there any questions or...
Yes. Go ahead. I remember back in the day, you know, years ago, there used to be a council meeting, and then the next Wednesday would be the workshop. I mean, question slash, you know, concern, why don't we, you know, do that anymore? But also, I feel like for the council that we currently have, we like to talk. We really, I mean, we really get into it some nights. And I mean, we've gotten out of here at 11:00 p.m. at one time. So I personally feel like bringing back the workshop council meeting format is better. Also, if, you know, the election's coming up, even in the future, there may be younger council members like myself, or even a younger mayor. And, you know, majority of people have jobs and, you know, or families, and they may not be able to do a 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. meeting. So I personally, I would like to go back.
Like I said, the second is...
The second.
Wednesday is the meeting, the third of the day.
The fourth Wednesday.
Okay.
It's the fourth.
Workshops, we don't have workshops every month. There's no need for that.
They're on a as-needed basis, but depending on.
Right, the charter was changed for that, but I'm just saying like the days that we need to have a workshop instead of doubling it up.
It's impossible to look at the agenda to know if it's needed, because I hate to come back here for a workshop for one thing for 30 minutes.
Yeah.
Maybe just consider the agenda and have your.
And I, I open to that as well, because, you know, there, there have been some workshops where it's had to be.
Well, we had to stop them.
Right, had to be, had to be, so maybe those are the ones we just want.
And it may just be at certain times of the year, budget time, or, you know, something like that.
And on that budget note, you know, I've heard some of these questions from, from council, and to promote more transparency in the budget process, I've been talking with Will, and also I've been talking with some of my other colleagues from the municipalities, what we're going to look at the schedule is, you know, how we do workshops on the general fund. We're going to do a separate workshop at first, prior to the general fund, where it's just talked about capital infrastructure projects. So it will be in this workshop, it'll be just to talk about the CFP. So that's, we're going to be looking to do that, you know, obviously during the budget season, but I've just heard some of the council comments on that, and I just, it, it makes sense. Maybe we talk about red light, or at least, you know, the red light camera project, but capital projects, but it, it's just helpful to do that in the process, in the budget process.
That's smart. Take that into consideration, make it as request, that we're not here. If the agenda's pretty full on a workshop agenda, then we maybe make it as a part time.
No, I, I mean, my only other concern, you know, too, is, you know, with the workshop, you know, and then it gives us time to talk to, you know, our constituents, go reach out to the residents about the issue, and give us time to do the research, because also in this format, you know, we're given a lot with not a lot of time to actually do anything with it. So I, again, splitting the format would benefit our community.
And I just want to emphasize procedurally from, uh, councilmember, as it relates to workshops, there's no requirement that you set a hard and fast rule. This body always enjoys that kind of flexibility and expression in how it proceeds. In other communities, for example, on the East Community where they were adopting the short-term rental ordinance, anytime there was short-term rentals, we just did that as a separate one because we knew, and everything else was typically done right after the meeting. So you always enjoy that discretion, and if, if you feel an item, much like when we were discussing Chapter 54, if you feel an item is going to bring particular attention, that you're always free as a body to, to, you know, instruct or, or move in that direction. And just to clarify some confusion, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers of Midas were referencing like four or five years ago, it was always the second Wednesday was the meeting, the fourth Wednesday was the workshop, and shortly before you joined the council, that was eliminated. But it used to be there were two meetings a month, every month.
Every month?
Yes.
We're not expecting anything at all. We literally can't come show up.
In some cases, yes, and in other cases, we have a long talk about the shape of the dates. End on the day.
Can we briefly switch that? I made a presentation for the state at Zeverdill, City of Zeverdill, and they actually had done their workshops prior to council meeting or immediately following. And they, there again, they kept their agendas for the workshops simple, so they kept them so there was one or two major items. They didn't do four or five on the ones that get rid of them, but they kept it simple. And it seemed to be an efficient process, and their council echoed it, because their council was not full-time either. And, but by all means, it's the pleasure council how we do this moving forward. So I'm, I'm open to your guidance.
So can we have consensus to accept these dates with the understanding that if there is an item that's on a workshop, that's going to be a big ticket item, that we do it on a separate night, so we have time to?
Figure that out.
Okay, I just need consensus? Shake your heads. Okay, we have consensus, thank you. Okay, next we have Resolution 2020-12, the town holidays for 2021. That was also in your package. That one we do need to, that one you're reading by title only?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 20-12, Resolution of the Town of Kansas City, Florida, authorizing the holiday schedule and other observed dates for the Town of Kansas City non-represented employees during the calendar year 2021 and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of Resolution number 2012 by title only.
I need a motion to accept Resolution 2020-12.
What's mine?
Okay.
She didn't say it, so it's you.
I do, you're doing it.
Motion, I need a second.
I'm surprised, Black Friday's a holiday.
Yeah, that's what, don't we have any discussion?
We will.
Moving, moving, puts it on the table.
Right, we're just moving to discuss it. That is, that's all we're doing. So I need a second?
Yes.
That's all we're doing, there was no vote. Open for discussion, ask your question now.
Oh, I mean, after looking at this, I guess I just don't personally think that Black Friday could be a holiday. Good Friday.
Isn't it? Oh, you're on, I'm on Good Friday.
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on. It says Friday after Thanksgiving. Coming from retail managers, I'm sorry, I called it Black Friday. It has a habit. I've worked many jobs, and I just, that's never been paid holiday, ever.
It isn't a charge.
Councilmembers, we're looking at it, but I'm almost certain that those dates are set in the town charter. Even the, even the Black Friday?
Yeah.
Well, I can understand that, I've always had that off, but Good Friday, that's not a federal holiday. Why is that Black?
But I want, while we're looking at this, I've also wanted to point out that there's one fewer holiday for the year because Christmas falls on a Saturday, so we actually are Thursday, Friday before Christmas, and so we're thinking one less holiday for the year. Some other municipalities will use that as a floating holiday throughout the year. I'm just throwing that out to you, but that's entirely the prerogative of the council. But right now, it's one fewer holiday than from 2020.
How do you say it, what is, what is the last holiday? What do you mean?
It's one less holiday because Christmas falls on a Saturday.
Well, you get the Friday before off, so how is that a last holiday?
Well, because typically, per the charter, and if you get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
So I, I want to clarify a few things. One, we're not talking about the charter, we're talking about the Personnel Code, which is embedded in the Land Development Code for reasons that aren't entirely clear, and we're separately addressing that. But the Personnel Code provides the following days. New Year's Day, January 1, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the third Monday in January, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, which is the last Monday in May, Independence Day, which is July 4, Labor Day, the first Monday in September, Veterans Day, November 11, Thanksgiving Day, the fourth Thursday in November, Friday following Thanksgiving, the fourth Friday in November, Christmas Eve, which is a half-day for December 24th, and Christmas Day, which is December 25th. Those are the holidays that are in your personnel manual, and this is the town council sets holidays and determines when they will be observed. The days listed below are designated as official town holidays.
So, I mean, I understand that you listed Fourth of July, but Fourth of July is a Sunday, so why do they get Monday?
If a holiday.
I'm not the guy.
That seems a very wasteful spending. Holiday pay is normally pretty good.
It's standard, if a holiday falls on a Sunday, you get the Monday. If a holiday falls on Saturday, you get the Friday.
As a general matter, Councilmember Noble's correct, at, at least as it relates to the federal government, and often state and city government.
Customs is.
That trend is that it's X observed, Christmas observed, Fourth of July observed. And so this year, Fourth of July following on a Sunday, I believe the, the Monday is observed as opposed to the Friday.
Okay.
And that's typically done to accommodate travel and the like, but who knows with 2021 that's like that.
So what's, what's the discrepancy?
Well, no, the chief cleared it up already, wasn't he?
Well, yeah, it's in the manual, so I'll change that and do it.
I just checked.
My, my question was still, the only thing on here, you know, like, Good Friday's not a, a federal holiday. I mean, who gets that off?
Did you say Friday, was, was Good Friday a federal holiday?
I did not represent that it's a federal holiday. I did represent that it is embedded in your Personnel Code, which is codified on the.
Yeah, I agree.
So Good Friday, according to your Personnel Code, which is codified, which is not typically the way that's done, and I didn't do that. The, nor did anybody else in this room, this includes us. The, the Personnel Manual provides Good Friday and Thanksgiving, and the Friday following Thanksgiving as both, both in.
Right, so it's, that's the way that it is. Right, they come up with a question and they got their answer.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm ready.
I'll open it for public comment.
This raises my 52157 Street. So if we wanted to change it, what would the process be? Because I think that goes, because it predates them, so I think that was my error when we were doing that kind of stuff. I don't remember putting Black Friday in there, though. I do remember being, I think it was during my time, when we did half a day for Christmas Eve. But that would just be my question, and it sounds like the council has some questions about a couple of those days, so it stands for this coming year, but how do they change it going forward?
I'm not big on changing.
Well, we're open to public comment, I would be inclined to take a public comment.
Right, I'll just wait anybody else for a public comment.
I'm, I didn't quite get that either. No, it's a term you've read, the holidays that were in the charter, you said, you said Thanksgiving is, yeah, so yeah, Thanksgiving. Black Friday's kind of a new term, man, and I know it's been for a while, but it used to be called Black Friday. So you're saying that the Thursday, Thanksgiving, of course, is always Thursday, Friday is a holiday.
According to us, yeah.
For the town.
Okay, is that, are we calling it Black Friday or this?
It just says Friday after Thanksgiving. So that's my apologies, that I called it that, that's just what I know it as.
And as for the other, instead of like Easter, or not Easter, wrong. Good Friday is not a federal holiday.
Not correct.
But do they consider Christmas a federal holiday?
Christmas is, yes.
Yes, sir.
That precedes me, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I will close public comment. Any more?
Madam Mayor, if I may state the questions in the succession I presented, as it relates to how to change this, the reason I'm making, I was emphasizing that this is codified, is the way to change codified things is ordinances. So it would be changed by ordinance, which would require first, second readings, and an advertisement. We already, my office has already looked at the, taking this out, and the Personnel Code is not typically codified, and certainly not within the Land Development Code, for this precise reason, is, is it makes it, is this artificial hurdle, given the way that the statutes are arranged, and what you do by resolution, what you do by ordinance, and once something is codified as an ordinance, harder to change. This resolution doesn't really allow you the, the flexibility or legal force to change what's codified. We're just a resolution, that was an administrative guideline in the book somewhere, like our fine schedules, for example, when we did code enforcement, I advocated that be done by resolution, so that way if you decided one day, you know what, it's not $13, it's eight, or 45, or whatever, we could just bring a resolution on one meeting and become same as true of the schedule. So as it relates to how to change that, it would be an ordinance. My advice to you, and what my office has already, they're going to undertake, is exercising your Personnel Code from your, from your code altogether. And that ordinance would look like a strike-all ordinance, and then cleaning up and modernizing some of the personnel manuals. Separately, the question as to Black Friday or the Friday after Thanksgiving, quite a little educational note, because I explain it to my kids, too. The reason it's typically called Black Friday in retail is because it was when they went from being in the red to being in the black, all the sales went through, and suddenly you're in the black from a bunch of various examples. So that's how that name came about. And finally, as it relates to the disparity between Christmas and, and Easter, why, I don't know, that's not my job. So I, I, that's how we would address all of those things, Madam Mayor, but as it relates to this resolution, as long as, if you wish to add to the list in a way that differs from what's codified, I think you'd be able, you would be able to do that. You cannot presently exercise what is there because of the way that's taught.
Without the ordinance.
Without ordinance, yes. You cannot, when I say presently, I mean, as you sit here tonight, you cannot subtract from the list that is.
But we could add to it.
Not in your charter, but in your personnel.
But we could add to it?
You could, if you so desire. If it was the will of this body collectively by at least a majority vote, yes, you could add to it.
Yeah, I don't think the same thing we want to add. So this needs to move forward in vote, correct?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Cardinal Howell?
Yes.
Okay, next is a bid award for 46 Avenue Recreational Trail. Manager Campbell, I know you gave us an update that was on our table here, but if you want to go ahead and further update before we.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, members of council, this was the item that we've been talking about for quite some time. This involves the bid award for the 46 Avenue Recreational Trail project, which also includes the partnership with Pinellas County through that joint project agreement that was approved earlier this year for the milling and resurfacing and curb and gutter and BDA improvement for 46 Avenue. So that means basically the modernization of 46 Avenue, which is something we've been working on ever since that day with the town. So it's an award of bid. We actually, you know, competitively did this. We had bidders that submitted bids and, you know, consistent with what was provided in the bid document. It was properly done in conjunction with the, you know, CCNA guidelines, which is Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act. And as it turns out, MTN Contractors Incorporated, in Pinellas, their local contractor was identified as apparent little bidder. So staff is actually recommending the award of bid to MTN Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $1,008,898. And the contractor would actually start initially, having to wait for the Pinellas County 15-day allowance for them to just double-check the bid to make sure that all the numbers met up with their requirements, because the county, if you recall, and this is a big for the project, they are the largest financier of this project. We were able to obtain just shy of $700,000 from the county for this project, basically for the milling and resurface of the roadway. They had 15 days to make sure the bid was sufficient. They actually contacted me this afternoon, and they said, you got to get it going. So that means we will schedule a pre-construction meeting that will involve bidding entity. Justin Keller, who's a contract county engineer, will work as the, basically, site superintendent and the resident P E, will collaborate with me, but I also am almost certain, knowing how the Haynes Road project has been working for at least the last two years, which MTN Contracting has been the contractor on the Haynes Road intersection of the roadway improvements at 54th and Haynes Road. The county has actually assigned one of their review engineers to be on-site within that project every day for the last two years. So it could be that that's the case, which is all good, because in reality, they're the biggest financier. This would be good for the town, and it would ensure consistency. So this project is set to be completed by, to my understanding, roughly June. We have some deadlines with the state Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for the trail component. I did, Councilmember Noble came in Tuesday, and we went for a ride out in the community, and I was able to provide her with an orientation of the entire core laws, the shale product interacts with the sidewalk project that's scheduled to occur east of the 55th Street ditch. I will gladly coordinate that similar meeting with each and every one of you as well, if you want to go out there. We also walk the 60th Street ditch, walk down to the Lake Glory neighborhood, and I'll be able to provide just an in-person visual overview of how this project is going to ultimately connect in with the Joe's Creek Improvement Trail, which is a $10 million project which will ultimately connect Pinellas Trail down at Tyrone Square Mall with the Lailman Community through Kansas City. This would hopefully be a spur trail for that. So we're excited this project's kind of fruition. I'm available for any further questions. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept that they award for 46 Avenue Recreational Trail. Any second?
Second.
Okay, open for questions or comments. Time from council? I'll open for public comment.
I've got a couple of questions.
You have to go to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Barnes, I live at 449461, Lake North. The trail that you're talking about that goes from 46 over to, I believe it's 44th The trail that you're talking about that goes from Forty-Six over to, I believe, it's Forty-Fourth Street? I'm going through the public area there?
Yes.
Okay. I talked to some people over there, and that side where you put the sidewalk in is wide and flat and everything, correct? The other side, it's deteriorating and falling in. In fact, the one guy's house over there on Forty-Fifth, if you go over there, every time they mow the lawn, they're shaving it back and back and back. But the drips, that's where they go fall down to the colder. And I mean, if you're going to fix the side over there and put the sidewalk over there, I couldn't understand why, because it's flat. You couldn't put it on yourself. Something needed to be done with that other side, somebody might have got hurt. A little kid would fall down there and get stuck in the colder. That's an issue over there, I need to work that.
Can I?
Yes.
Can I respond?
Yes.
That was one of the areas that I'm walking, Councilmember Noble, so I appreciate your concerns. That ditch, that open ditch for that two-block area, we actually inherited from Pinellas County when we did that Culver project down at Forty-Third, which is the box culver project that originated on, uh, County Mayor's advice this term and completed when I first started with the town. That ditch, the primary purpose is for stormwater conveyance. And there's a balancing act between what the county originally felt with all of their objectives, as you see with the Joe's Creek ditch, there's a balancing act. Because the county, their purpose is, as long as it conveys, which means as long as it processes and handles water and doesn't flood, that's their primary purpose. Problem is, we like aesthetics, we like things to look nice. So there are plans on the eastern side, when they put that sidewalk in, to shore up that portion, because there's going to be a repainting wall in there with a railing that's regulatory by EDA and actually.
I can use that.
The west side knows, as I've mentioned to Councilmember Noble, right now, there's no official way to walk through there. But we anticipate that once there's a designation, a walkway through there, the need to walk on the other side of the ditch, I could probably tell you that if my maintenance personnel was in public work, because we mow and maintain that with string trimmers, it's too steep for us to get in there with mowers.
Correct.
I looked at slope mowers per time. I also looked at this mower deal with the mower steeping. It's a maintenance issue, all of our ditches are maintenance issues. Because originally, you could get in there with a dual mower on our side, but on the county's original side, we couldn't. We're looking at some additional shoring mechanisms to potentially prohead it or put surface plantings in on that western side of the ditch. Maybe some wire grass or some purple ant grass plump here and there, provided we work with the residents, to kind of deter people from walking in there. Because when you look at it, it's not intended for people to walk in there anyways, because the slope goes right up to fifty yards, and there's no flat area there. So it's not intended, you know, kids are going to be kids.
And it's a safety hazard.
And, well, it is and it isn't, because look at the Joe's Creek, the big four roar. Doesn't have a test on it, and it's easily twenty to thirty feet deep.
I know, I've been constructing for over fifteen years of my life. And up in Minneapolis, Minnesota, if that was happening up there, they make us come in and make it a three-to-one slope so candy-mowed, and somebody can't fall down and get hurt. I know it's a lot of money to do, and this is a small town, but I mean, it is a safety issue.
And that's a good point. I have already asked the county for future cooperative funding to see if there's any funding available to do some dabian baskets within that ditch. But personally, the engineers love those. Those are the, the fenced-in baskets are filled with crushed gel that they use to stabilize and prevent erosion. I personally don't like them, because they're unattractive. I'd much prefer a grass slope. But there may be some other options down the road, because obviously, from a managerial perspective, I would like for it to be a little easier to mow and maintain instead of it being a string trimmer situation. But that's something we can certainly look at down the road. But I think the short term is to see what the trail does, as far as see if the focus point changes, because there's no designation on the west side that's intended to be used for walking. Kids just do it, and my maintenance guys use it, too, to actually access the ditch. But if it's still a problem, our plan is, and I didn't get it, Councilmember Noble, when we were in the field, is to talk to one or two of those residents on that side to see if they were opposed to us putting in some of these. Do you see the grass that we have in the median on Fifty-Fourth Avenue North within those median areas? Would you do a similar treatment of those? Which would all deter someone walking along that little cow path that's on the top of it then.
Well, I lock my dog up and down that street. And one day, I was locking my dog there, and the guy was mowing the slope. He was laying down on the ground, taking a nap, basically. And because he was tired, because he was pushing a mower up and down that slope. And he was like, tired out here, because the slope's ridiculous. If you look at the slope, every time they mow it, the way the mowers go there, they cut more and more of that bank away. If you look at the roots that are there, you've got chop marks from the lawn. And I mean, it's not even safe for the guys that are mowing it.
We will take a look at it. We've looked at IBCD and some other methods. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Go to the chairman.
I just want to make sure that I understood, because the amount of the paper that's coming in. The total cost of the project, you said, was one point eight million?
One point zero eight million, yes.
And is Kansas City paying for all of that? Or is this cooperative, like, are we in joint with someone?
We are in joint with Pinellas County. We're also, we're in joint for Pinellas County for, I believe, with roughly six hundred and eighty thousand and change. We won a land and water.
Oops, sorry. I apologize.
We won a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the land and water conservation fund, which is, requires us to pay for the other half. So the other half is the town expenses. So we're getting the entire improvement for a little over two-hundred thousand dollars. And I can give those specific figures for you.
I was just curious, because I know I used to pick, was there a community block, like a community development block grant available? And I know sometimes there's recreation, it goes to recreational trailers, brands specifically for recreational purposes, so I was curious if there was anything like that.
We applied for the federal Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, which is LWCF, which required us to fund a hundred percent of the original trail improvement, which was targeted a little over four hundred thousand. They said they would pay for half of that, so roughly one hundred ninety thousand dollars is coming from the state, which the federal designates to the state to dole out the proceeds. So in reality, it's, we're getting that whole four roar being improved for roughly a little over two-hundred thousand dollars, and then roughly six hundred and eighty. I'll have to, please don't poke me on the numbers, I'll get you the specifics number. Roughly six hundred and eighty, a hundred percent of our council made roughly six hundred and eighty thousand dollars we obtained from the county for the.
So we're on the hook for a total amount of approximately, after grant and after other contributions, we have to lay out approximately?
The total project cost is that one point oh eight, five hundred and eighty million. So the total cost of the town is a little over two-hundred thousand, which is coming out of the capital proceeds.
That's right. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I will close public comment. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the appointment of Councilmember Bonnie Noble to Forward Pinellas Board. This is a position that goes on a rotation basis amongst a set of municipalities. And it is now Kansas City's turn to have someone represent on this board. And I currently serve on several boards and organizations, and sincerely enjoy them. And Councilmember Noble, I am envious of you. I wish that this turn had happened earlier, when I could have done this. I would have given nothing more than to have done that. So a little envious, but I also am really glad that you are willing and want to do this. I feel it'd be a really good experience. Anything you wanted to add?
Well, I was excited, too, when Whit Black, their executive director, contacted me, which is a friend of mine. And I originally thought, you know, it needed to be a position with someone of term. So it needs to be of a council member that theoretically is either new to council or is going to be on council for more than potentially March of next year.
Didn't work for me.
You know, it was one of those things where I thought about it, and, you know, Councilmembers of Midas, I thought about you as well. And in this particular circumstance, Councilmember Noble, with just your experience and interest in the town, this is something that, the unique thing about these positions, as you witnessed with the. PSTA position, that I remember, Joe Barclay came to our council meeting some time ago, and they said the Forward Pinellas, well, the PSTA position. Right now, it's under rotation, where it's the Councilmember from Bel Air's position. But in another term, it's going to be us. Plus, there's some other agencies throughout the county, but their representation is only open to elected officials in each municipality. So with all due respect, Councilmembers of Midas, I ask, Councilmember Noble, if she'd be willing to do this, I've worked with Forward Pinellas. We have a contract, we have a planning and mapping contract with Forward Pinellas, which they used to be known as the Pinellas Planning Council, and they rebranded back about five years ago to became Forward Pinellas. So it's a great opportunity. I'm gracious and glad that you're willing to serve this faculty, because it puts, it further puts our town's leadership out in the greater Pinellas County community, and gives us more notoriety than we deserve. And I will tell you, their meetings are on the second Wednesday of the month, but they start at, I believe, one o'clock. So, and they quit, it indicated to me that they're usually out of there well enough to give you enough time to come to the council meeting. What he said is perfectly fine. If they intend to run late, you know, he says you're fine leaving, and you get credit for the meeting. So I think it's great, thanks, I'm excited, so thank you.
I'd like to see some of Kansas City to do this. I mean, in the past, we just haven't gotten much of that representation. So I do encourage, if the PSTA one comes up and they're looking for her, I encourage us to be a part of that. You'll get some good networking and meeting people. So I assume you accepted that you wanted to do this?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Yes, I'll open it for public comment. Oh, wait, I didn't get a motion in a second, right? I need a motion to approve Bonnie being appointed to the Forward Pinellas position.
Motion.
I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, a little backwards here. And I'll open it for public comment. I'll close public comment. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the renewal of the Pinellas County Combined Mutual Aid Agreement. Manager Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is another housekeeping chore of the town. This was previously signed, we typically sign this on an annual basis. This basically extends our multi-agency cooperation with the county for mutual aid agreement. It basically solidifies the process whereby our law enforcement personnel, in the event that we have to operate outside our boundaries in another municipality, it enables us to do it relatively seamlessly. So this is a housekeeping chore, and it's between the town and the sheriff's office and the school board. So staff's recommending approval and signature.
Can you get a motion to approve the renewal of the Pinellas County Combined Mutual Aid Agreement?
Motion.
I need a second. Any questions or comments from council? I'll open it for public comment. We'll close public comment. Call the council, please.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmembers of Midas?
Yes.
Mayor Dudley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Okay, next is comments question. So I'll start with Councilmember Noble.
So I guess, first of all, did all of you get a call from Manager Campbell saying that he had COVID?
Yes.
Yes.
All of you did? Manager Campbell, but he did not get a call.
To be honest with you, I personally didn't call you, because of your outburst and your lack of support for me at a prior council meeting. And I figured you would find out through the grapevine. My original allegiance was to the mayor, but due to HIPAA regulations, I was not required to tell anyone on council that I had, you know, had the COVID virus. I can tell you that none of my staff are required to indicate that they have the COVID virus, but I felt obliged, since we're a small town, to practice transparency and notify the council. So in reality, I felt like you would find out about it, because that was right after the last council meeting, where you indicated to me that you weren't too pleased with me in general. So I figured you would find out one way or the other.
And unfortunately, Manager Campbell, that seems to be how you treat a lot of people in this town. So out of professional courtesy, I want the council to know that I went back after that council meeting, and I sat there, and I went over the budget, what has been done, what hasn't been done. And I, you know, from day one, I have asked to have better communication. And alls I get from the vice mayor is, you know, Manager Campbell's doing a good job. Manager Campbell's doing a good job. So I went back, and I really thought about it. And I put a lot of conscientious thought, you know, about how this town's going, what isn't getting done, is there any opportunity for it to change? And when I break things up, and alls I get is pushback from the vice mayor. And.
I don't remember having any discussions with you.
That's fine, can I, can I please?
You're making accusations, that mean I'm certainly going to come to my own defense.
Can I please finish? And so, we can go back and look at the, and read the minutes, but I have had, time and time again, pushback. And I have wanted better communication and for us to discuss things. So after thinking about it, and going back, reviewing all of my notes, reviewing what has been done, what hasn't been done, that Friday, I did go up, and I talked to Manager Campbell, and I told him it is time for him to leave. And I really think it is. I think, again, a new perspective, I'll use your words. The town needs a new perspective. And so I have asked, I have told Manager Campbell that I think it's time for him to leave. And in that meeting that I had with him, I told him by January, the council meeting in January, which I can look up the date, but we all kind of sort of know when it is, that I would have start, put on the agenda, I will have agenda items. And we can start going over all of the things that, on the ongoing projects, what their status is, we never get a timeline, things that have not been done, that should have been done, things that need to be done, or redone. And so, you know, I'm just going to have these things put on the agenda, and we can start going over it. And I think it's important, we're going to have an election in March. We'll have new people up here, and I think it's only fair from the start that, you know, they understand. I mean, Manager Campbell, it's his choice. If he wants to do it in public, I have no problem bringing up everything. And this is what I told him, that needs to be questioned. You know, there's many, many things. And so, starting January, if that's his choice, we can start going over all of the things that have been maybe not done correctly, or whatever. So I just want to, and, you know, it's just a courtesy to tell you all, because I'm not going behind anybody's back. And I went up and told him in private, I did not mention it at that meeting. I talked to him in private, and I want to let you know that I all did, that that's what I did. And next month, I plan to get things on the agenda and go over, start going over things. So people in the future can see, and we can know what's going on. And I'm sorry, but that's a perfect example of, you know, I, no, I didn't call you. I don't have to because of HIPAA. So, you know, that's fine. But I've heard so many times, he's a divisive leader, he splits our town, and we need a new perspective. So that's all I have, thank you.
Speaking of all that, and I'm glad you're doing well, I'm glad you're back. The only thing that I have is, I would like to recommend that we move the discussion for the dates about the holidays on the next workshop, you know, to make it, you know, start a little bit.
And I heard you say you were, that's something that's being worked on, taking it out of the.
In the broadest sense of updating the personnel code largely, in addition to, I need to talk to the manager more specifically, as it relates to, in communities where you do this, there's a, you have to go about it by also taking into account who ensures the town and what personnel policies they need necessary, which is a legal. who ensures the town and what personnel policies they, be necessary, which will be legally necessary and working that out. So we will get that together. The holiday thing is a small thing.
Okay. Are you okay?
I want to know if there's one, two, three, four of us up here, I mean, and I don't know what your opinion is, that we think Matt's doing a fine job and want to keep promoting the lawn to do a fine job. Why one person thinks that they can come in here and hit me in the fire? How many years you worked during that? Seven years?
Uh, it'll take seven in March.
Seven in March. Where's our loyalty for someone who worked for seven years?
I'm just looking at facts, Vice Mayor.
Well, we'll see. Let's just let it go and you put it on the agenda and we'll see because I have absolutely no idea what you're talking about. I mean, we sat here and had a meeting and timelines and the engineer was here and gave us exactly what was going on with capital improvement. So I have no idea. So we'll just wait until January and see what's come on the agenda. Councilmember Noble?
Good morning.
Manager Campbell?
Um, just briefly, divisive leader, splits the town. I think I've been called a liar by this one council member. What troubles me is, and I'm just going to bring this to the forefront, Councilmember Noble visited my office Tuesday morning, it's my first day back after being back from quarantine. She was there at 9:00 AM and I overheard her talking with some staff up front. So I thought I'd go up and in a nice way say, is there something I can respond to you about? Is there any more information I can give you? And she brought some things to the forefront that she had concerns over and I said, well, you know, let's go out and take a look at it because maybe the way you're looking at them are different from the way that I'm looking at them. So we obviously went out to the 60th Street ditch. We spent, I spent two hours with her. I had not even met with my staff yet, but I chose to meet with Councilmember Noble. It was the most pleasant meeting I think I've ever had with Councilmember Noble. She invited me to ride in her truck with her bird. And honestly, it was a, what I was really thinking she dropped me on the street for and make me walk home after the way she talked to me, um, you know, in my office on that particular Friday. But I was so, I felt like it was a super productive meeting. I was glad that we had it and I felt like we were able to talk about some information on projects that were beneficial that we've been working on for years. So you had indicated to me, Councilmember Noble, about a situation that you had in your prior career where you had made a presentation to someone about a software plan and they didn't respond in the right way, but you indicated to me in our conversation how you learned how important it was to be respectful in your presentation comments and not to, you know, be difficult with people. And I might not be using the same words, but what amazes me is how you could be so nice to me in public or so nice to me in that office setting, take time to get information, plug me for information. I told you that my goal is to make you look good as a council member, as it is all of you, to get you the experience that you need to be better. I indicated to you that you could be mayor someday. My goal is to make you look better. Yet still, unfortunately, when we come to these settings, there's just some anger and resentment that's built up and I can't change that as much as I try. And it's unfortunate, you know, I've heard you on your comments, you indicated to me that I think council would be running opposed or uncontested in the election. I get that. I know there's change coming within the town, but I just want you to know that I'm still committed to this town. I'm still committed to our council. And we may not agree on the same thing. That's a given in anything. But my heart's always been in it and it still is. So if you still at some time don't feel as though I'm your force, then motion to fire me and we'll move on and you'll get another force. But until then, I'm your force. So thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. I try and work.
I don't do it. So thank you all for adapting and working with us. I think through, I know as from a legal framework, this year has been quite orthodox to say the least as we've adapted to and from digital meetings, meeting layouts and the like, and to the public the same. Thank you for understanding that your local government is doing what it can to adapt and serve you within the limits of its own authority as well. And so thank you all for working with us and it's a pleasure to continue to serve this council.
Um, I just want to remind everyone that the qualifying period ends Friday at noon and we've had a lot of activity with people pulling packets, so it's exciting, people wanting to get involved.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to wish everyone to have happy holidays and I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? To adjourn.